Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, September 18th. We are at the Marlboro Public School Committee meeting. The time is 7:10. I'll call the meeting to order. If you can have everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to apologize for the delay for all those watching at home. We are being taped live with WMCT TV and we are streaming. So we have just one thing on the agenda for tonight, which is the Richer School presentation. So we'll start that right now. Let's dive right in, shall we? Superintendent, go for it.
Good evening, everybody. And I would like to apologize for the delay. I will pull the rookie card. Note to self that don't forget to book the media folks when you're setting up the meeting. So my sincere apologies and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, WMCTV. We appreciate you.
They are superheroes, for sure. But good evening. Very excited to be here tonight to have a, what we hope is a very productive conversation about the work to date and what is to come for our Richer School project. If you look up on our screens, those that are in the audience, we have a very succinct program in store for this evening. We are hoping to spend about a half an hour doing a brief presentation about kind of where we've been, where we are, where we're going, and then spend about a half hour with some Q and A up at the podium. More specifically, on the agenda this evening, we're going to take a few minutes and talk a little bit about why richer and why we are focusing on a new richer school. We are then going to hear a bit from our owner's project manager, and those are individuals that are working for Vertex, who is the firm that we have contracted with through this process. They're going to talk a little bit about the project itself as it relates to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And we're also going to have an opportunity to hear from our architects. And they're going to go over a bit of the different design schematics and the process that we've been going through to help us kind of land on ultimately where and what we're looking to do with the richer schools. So we're excited to introduce you to our OPM, or reintroduce you to our OPMs and our architects this evening. But before that, we're going to talk a little bit about why richer school. There are a variety of reasons. And if you've spent time in the richer school building, I know we have many staff members here this evening, including the principal and other administrators. So thank you so much for being here. It's great seeing all of you and our richer parent community as well. But if you've spent time in the building, you know that there is much to be desired in relation to the actual facility itself. And so what you see before you is essentially a list of issues as it relates to the actual structure regarding the envelope. And if people aren't familiar with what that means, it really just about the outside of the building. And so that there is an inefficient envelope for the building itself, issues with HVAC. I actually just had a conversation today with the richer staff about that. So we know that there are definitely some concerns regarding the HVAC system. The fire sprinkler system, our modular classrooms where our kindergartners are housed are deteriorating and in need of significant care. And of course, the building is not fully accessible, which is a major issue as it relates to our work around equity, but also the ADA and all the compliance issues that we have with that. And so while I would pose that these are significant, significant issues that require immediate attention, I would also share that the educational programming needs that we have in the building with the structure itself are not being met to the degree that they need to be and can be and will be with a new facility. So the school building committee was tasked with looking at two different options, and actually multiple options even within those two options, which we'll hear about this evening. As many of you know, or you may be aware, that we have some overcrowding issues at our elementary schools. I'm seeing some nods in the audience. So I think folks are very much aware of that. And so one of the things that we pursued was this idea of a either addition renovation or new building for the richer school, but then also a renovation at the Kane School. And how might those two projects running parallel would be able to support some of the overcrowding issues and help not just their two schools, but also our other elementary schools across the city? And if you have had an opportunity to, you know, been paying attention to the school building committee meetings or to the school committee meetings, there was some very rich conversation about what direction we should be going in as it relates to either a larger richer school with 950 students, but not involving the Kane project, or a smaller richer school with about 870 students and quite a significant addition renovation that would be required at the Kane School. So the reason that you will notice that the richer elementary and the Kane addition are kind of grayed out sort of in the background on the right side of the slide is because the school building committee spent a lot of time researching the overall costs of these different options. And I will say that the option to the right, the smaller richer school with the addition at the Kane School, was actually quite a significant cost. The addition renovation at the Kane itself was going to be approximately $70 million for about 80 students that it would relieve from a larger Kane building with no reimbursement from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And so what did we say? The math isn't mathing? It just didn't make sense to go in that direction. The school building committee made a recommendation to the school committee, and the school committee did vote to land on the larger richer building with a student enrollment of 950 students for going at this time any renovation or additions at the Kane School. So you might be looking at that student enrollment number and thinking that's quite a significant change from where the school currently is. And it would in fact be our largest elementary school in the city. The Goodnow Brothers Elementary School currently is about 800 students. So it would be even larger than that. But one of the main goals in constructing a building that size that would house that many students is that we would actually be able to pull the enrollment down from the other three schools, restoring some of the space usage in the other buildings. For instance, and I know this is a really kind of near and dear issue to many of us, but our libraries, we'd be able to remove students and redistrict students so that they could attend a larger Kane, I'm sorry, a larger richer building and would be able to reclaim really important... and be able to hopefully bring back robust media centers for our staff and students, among other issues, of course. I mentioned that because I know that one's really important to many of us. And so with that, I'm actually going to shift over to our OPM firm Vertex, who is going to get a little bit more in the weeds about the process itself.
So my name's Christopher Eberly. I'm a project executive at the Vertex Companies, where the OPM that was selected by the City of Marlboro to help bring on the designer and also eventually will participate in the construction to make sure that Marlboro is getting the quality that they're paying for with a building project if you move forward. As part of this project, Marlboro entered into a statement of interest with the MSBA that was eventually moved and accepted, which allowed them to enter into a feasibility study agreement. It involves Marlboro in what's called the Core Grant Program of the MSBA. The Core Grant Program of the MSBA is a series of modules. It's a framework for what you need to do in order to receive what is quite a substantial reimbursement. They set certain standards that they want the school to ultimately meet. And in exchange for those standards, the city or town receives a sizable grant from the MSBA. There are rules within the program, but within those rules, there's an overarching structure. It really starts with that eligibility period where all of the cities and towns in Massachusetts can enter into the program and ask to be moved into it. And from that, only a handful are selected. They're selected based on need, and they're selected based on what are the pressing issues that need to be solved within that specific district. The program sets space standards because the state has decided that if they're going to fund elementary schools or middle schools or high schools within the state of Massachusetts, they really want to make sure that they're excellent learning facilities. And so they set minimum sizes based on an educational plan that each community develops themselves. And so as you develop that educational plan within your community, it feeds into the work that the designers do to ensure that they have the right size project. A lot of people will look at this project and say, why is it so big? And one of the main reasons it ends up so big is because of those standards. In exchange for those standards, though, the state is going to provide the community with a significant amount of reimbursement that supports building a high-quality learning environment. Now, as part of those modules, the MSBA requires that every project has to do all the parts of it. And so you'll move through each one of those modules. We'll have to submit a report to the MSBA. And it's really so that they can make sure that we're delivering a high-quality product, but also that the community knows that we've looked at every option as we march our way from an idea to a building. Ultimately, when they determine that grant program, they're going to determine it based on a percentage. And that percentage varies from community to community. They'll look at the social economic factors in that specific community. And each year, they'll assign a reimbursement rate based on the framework of how they reimburse for the project that says how much your community will receive. Marlboro has a 71% reimbursement rate as of this year. And so as we move through this feasibility study where we are now and eventually into schematic design, we're going to be selecting options and we're going to ultimately vote at the end of schematic design in this community whether or not to continue the project. At that point, you fund the entirety of the project, including what will be reimbursed. But then as you move forward, that reimbursement offsets the cost of the project through the duration of design and construction. So while you're going to see some big numbers, ultimately what the cost to taxpayers becomes is the amount of the project less the reimbursement. So every time I speak to the public, I love to say that this is a process. And where we're meeting with you today, we're approximately 15% into a process that will deliver a design of a building. The modules are broken up into different stages. And I always find it easy to talk about these stages, not in terms of their names, but in terms of what they're really trying to achieve. PDP, which is the Preliminary Design Program, is really about figuring out what is the right size building? What should be in that building? And then we compare those values to an average building, a school building in Massachusetts of a similar type. So if you saw the city council discuss the project back in the summer, they were discussing average costs that gave them some relative pricing. Then you move into the where is the building process. And so in PDP, we whittled down to some sites that we thought were good candidates. And in PSR, the Preferred Schematic Report, at that time, we're trying to figure out what's the right place to put the building. And so a big part of today's presentation is to show you the work that we've done to reach this point and also to show you where we've ended and how we're evaluating. No decisions have been made as of tonight on how we're moving forward. We're really just trying to follow a process. Once the site is selected, then we move into the schematic design phase, which is how much does your building cost? And that's really where we're going to set the total project budget. We're going to have all the elements that are going to go into the total project. We're going to have contingencies for overruns in certain aspects. And ultimately, if approved, we would move into a design phase that seeks to open the building in, or to design the building by December of '26, to move into construction documents to represent that design by October '27. And ultimately, we would look to open the building in 2029. And we'll talk more about that schedule at the end. Now I'm going to turn it over to Lamaro Pagano, the architect, to speak about the work they've been doing.
Hello. My name is Christina Baselmanns. I'm with Lamaro Pagano Associates Architects, where the architect assigned to the feasibility study. How's that? Any better? A little better. Okay, speak a little louder. Okay. My name is Christina Baselmanns. We're the architect in charge of the feasibility study from Lamaro Pagano Associates Architects. On the screen now is a summary slide to show you what our process has been like since May of this year. So what it reads along the top right now is our first course of action was to work closely with the school and district to determine the educational plan and educational program. And through this process, we learned exactly what are those spaces that are required to serve a richer elementary school of 950 student enrollment. At the same time, we completed an evaluation of the existing building and sites. And so we wanted to determine the existing constraints and challenges that would inform our base repair and addition renovation scopes of work. And lastly, we did an exhaustive search of potential alternative sites for the richer elementary school. And we started with a very large list of over 139 10-plus acre parcels west of Route 85 and systematically eliminated those sites until eventually we were left with only a handful of potential options. And so one of the first questions we always hear is why can't we just repair the existing richer elementary school? And as part of the feasibility study, as Chris mentioned, it is absolutely required that we take a look at that. With a detailed scope of work and cost estimates, we evaluated the base repair. And the base repair would not only be costly and disruptive, but the biggest issue is that the base repair cannot accommodate that 950 student enrollment. It is just not possible to fit that many students in the existing building. And that's a critical goal of the project and required in order to address the district overcrowding that the superintendent mentioned. So the next obvious question is why can't we just add on to the existing elementary school? So we also did a detailed analysis of how the building could be renovated and added on to. And the addition renovation costs came in actually higher than the cost of new construction. It is actually more expensive. And given the constraints of the existing structure, there were several compromises in terms of what we were able to accomplish programmatically within the building with the educational plan. So all of that and the fact that the addition renovation project would be longer and much, much more disruptive to the students and staff of the existing elementary school. That was one of the reasons that it was eliminated from our consideration. So this is a high-level overview slide on the page now to take a look at the options that we have reviewed and eliminated as part of the PSR process. So on the top left, we have BR or Base Repair. That was the one I just mentioned, where what can we do with the existing building the way it is? Base repair was not feasible due to the fact that it could not accommodate the increased enrollment. Then we had the AR options, addition renovation options. Once again, we found that these were more costly, more disruptive, and had compromises to the educational plan. So these were no longer considered as part of our options. Then we had NC, which stands for New Construction. We looked at a handful of new construction options on the existing richer site. And so that's what these stand for. And as you can see, what's highlighted here on the bottom, we have reduced our options down to New Construction 2A, which is one of the most compact and efficient options that we were able to come up with. Now, at the same time, we're whittling down the list of alternative sites. So we told you earlier that we looked at a lot of different sites as a potential option to build another richer school offsite. And we've whittled those down as well to the point that we are at just one option right now to be being considered, which is New Construction 6, which is new construction at the Forest and Ames site. So once again, we are down to two options that we're going to share with you today, the new construction on the existing richer site and the new construction on the Forest and Ames site. And my colleague Chris is going to go through those in a little bit more detail.
Thank you, Christina. My name is Chris Lee, another Chris on this team. And as Christina outlined, while no, and Chris have outlined, there's no final decision made. We're in the middle of a process. We're in a fuddling kind of process. And so what you see before you are two of the better candidates that we're looking at. And so to jump right into it, for a new building of this size to fit 950 students, there's only one location really to build, and that's on the fields down the hill from the existing school. And the existing school is shown in gray. And the pinch point between these two buildings is about 65 feet. That might seem close, but that's actually quite generous from all the different options that we've studied. And in our experience and in Vertex's experience, buildings have been actually constructed even closer. So definitely not the worst-case scenario. The existing building would be slated for demolition after the new school is complete. Now, as Christina mentioned, this building is the most compact and efficient. We're able to respect numerous setbacks that the property has, as well as distance ourselves from the construction activities. We're intentionally building into the hill so that you actually enter in at the middle level and only have to travel up one floor or down one floor. So that makes a three-story building a little bit smaller. You're not having to climb two floors necessarily at the same time. Now, this also implies while the new building is being constructed, that those fields will not be available to the school or to the public for about two years during construction. Another aspect that we looked closely at is traffic. Cars and buses are very important. And so what you see here is a series of red arrows that indicate the bus loop that would be coming off of Foley Road, the main entrance. And to the right side, we would use Ripley Avenue for a parent loop. And that would coincide with some of the emergency responders and building code requirements to have basically a ring road around the school. So there's multiple uses for additional driveways, as outlined, around the school and around the playfields. And so the parents would come around and circulate around those new fields, drop off near the main entrance, similar to the buses, and then exit the way they came in. Now, to describe the building itself and to think of spaces as building blocks, and one of the intentional things we did here to save on our overall footprint was to stack the gym over the cafeteria on different levels. And so we're able to save a lot of space because we don't have a lot of space. Additionally, in this organization, we've located all the classrooms around the perimeter of the building, or on the outside. So there's plenty of daylight for those classrooms. So that implies then that the remaining spaces, the shared and support spaces, would be located in the middle. Now, we're aware that we want to make these spaces inviting and inspiring. And so we would endeavor to have skylights and light wells to make those spaces suitable to have a connection to the outside and also for daylight. And the last point here is something that was inspired from one of our building tours. We saw an example of a school that embraced accessibility with a central monumental ramp so that all students could use that ramp or their, no matter their kind of mobility status. So peers could also travel just together. And it was a wonderful example. And so this would have its own version of a monumental ramp for universal accessibility. So having explained the design concept, we can share these plans. And on the left side is that main or middle floor plan. You would enter in where that red arrow is, kind of in the middle. And you can see that there are classrooms around the perimeter. There are shared spaces in the middle. And on that floor, we have kindergarten and first grade because we've heard that little feet take a little while to move. And so we're trying to be accommodating to those grades and ages. And so they have great proximity to those core and shared spaces without having to traverse a lot of stairs and limit that need. On the lower floor is just the fifth graders, as well as the cafeteria, music rooms, and other shared spaces, mechanical spaces and central custodial spaces. And we heard that actually this works because the fifth graders are on their own schedule. So they could be actually disruptive to other grades if co-located on the same floor. So those three grades, so that leads us to the top floor. And there's actually three grades on the upper level, grades two, three, and four. Here, we've located art rooms and innovation labs as those shared spaces in the middle. So in summary, we believe that there's a strong potential to meet the education plan. The configuration excels at locating spaces the way Marlboro Public School leaders envisioned delivering education, as well as having some flexibility. As grades kind of swell in their enrollment numbers, there's kind of easy transitions to reassign grades along the outside. Operationally, the goal is to have kind of a central area for recess and play. We're also met. One central receiving area. Many other schemes actually had to split the cafeteria receiving area from general receiving, which was not desirable. And so those are just a couple of points there. And lastly, just as I mentioned, there are some architectural quantities that are really aimed at the student and student-centric design. Now, before we get into the next option, just want to orient everyone. The yellow shape on the top right is the existing richer school. And so this other location that we've been studying is at the intersection of Ames and Forest. And it's actually at the other end of the same neighborhood. And that's at the bottom left. So despite being a new location, it's nearby and familiar. It's a smaller site, but there are less setbacks and restrictions allowing for better utilization of just the area. We have two access points to the property, similar to the existing school. So that helps just create two separate traffic patterns, again, for buses and parents or cars. And so on the bottom right, there's that red arrow loop. So buses would have their own designated entrance and would be able to queue up in front of the school. Parents would be coming off of Ames Street and could circulate around the perimeter and also drop off near the front entrance and walk into the school. Now, this configuration allows for enough onboarding where it would not impact Ames and Forest greatly. And so with that, the location of the parking and the playfields to the left of the school, we see this as being a strong candidate as well. There's great proximity for community use for the parking in the fields. So that was a positive. So to explain, the design concept here is best put by a separation of public and private spaces. So we see the gym, the cafeteria, media center as public spaces that want to be close to the front of the school, as well as close to that main entrance if it wants to be open after-school hours. And then expand off of that with two conventional classroom wings. And so those could easily be locked off for security or, you know, different access needs. And so here, we'd have two grades per floor. This is still a three-story building. We'd still endeavor to have this be kind of a stepped building where you enter in at that middle level and still go up and down just one floor. And the resulting shape is an L-shaped building. And to take a quicker look at this, you can see at the bottom of the page that arrow, that's your main entrance. And to your right, you would have gymnasium and cafeteria that could be adjoined, similar to the Goodnow School Building, where you could have a whole potentially school assembly. Administration would be just to your left as you enter. And you would have two classroom wings, one ahead and one to the left. So that pattern would repeat on the other floors. And this is just as strong of a scheme as the other, the potential to meet the education plan, locate spaces in their ideal locations. So the lower floor would have grades two and three. And the upper floor would have grades four and five. grades four and five. Now, for both parts of the feasibility study, we've helped curate a set of evaluation criteria to be objective about the different options that we've evaluated. Antilist, the PSR set of criteria, there's six main categories. That's location in the district with factors such as the suitability for a school within the neighborhood. There were some nearby that really just weren't a good location for a school. There's no sidewalks, traffic impacts, that sort of thing. Topic two was the education program fulfillment. Are we meeting the future needs of Marlboro Public Schools? Topic three was site and facility goals and objectives, and so on. Construction phasing, impact, schedule, and cost. And I'm going to hand it back to Berthex.
Thanks, Chris. So a lot of these decisions get made by what's called the School Building Committee. School Building Committee is the group that the MSBA asks the city to form, and it's made up of officials, employees, and residents of the Marlboro community so that they can make the decisions necessary. There's a framework of who needs to be part of that committee, and several members sitting in front of you, as well as several members of the audience, are part of that committee. That group has met since November of last year and has done a lot of the work to guide the designers and ourselves as we've been on this journey to explore up to the options that you saw tonight. Part of that is to create an evaluation. And this evaluation is not to say what is good or bad, but it's to do a comparison. It's to say what is better or best or not as good when you compare one to the next. As part of this evaluation, we did make certain decisions. We decided that the base repair does not address your biggest need, as Chris and Christina pointed out. So it doesn't address that growth that allows all of the schools to get a little bit smaller. So we evaluated it, but after that evaluation, we feel it can't move forward. NC seven, later down the page, was another off-site location we looked at. But over the course of examining it, it's a commercial building that gained more tenants. And so we think that with its marginally close costs to some of the other schemes that were presented tonight, we don't think the city acquiring that site is feasible. Additionally, with some of the challenges to make the addition and renovation work, we are beginning to look away from that. And with the school committee vote to not pursue a cane addition, it also eliminates all of the smaller 850 schemes, and it eliminated consideration of cane. Now, as you can see here, when we rank them, we really try and make something that's easy for everyone to understand. Red is not advantageous. Dark green is most advantageous. And so it's a five-point step between the different schemes to figure out where the schemes are best. The second one from the top is NC two A, which was presented tonight. We found that that was most advantageous in terms of meeting the site and facility goals when we discussed the advantages it had. And across the board, except as it relates to the impact during construction, it was really one of our more advantageous schemes. NC six, similarly, has a lot of positives. It really works well with the educational plan. It really works well because it's completely separate from the education that you'll need to do during the two years of construction. And it was the cheapest option when considering what the appraisal told us its value was. But it has a huge caveat, and that is that it is privately owned. And so as we explore these two options, we have to consider whether that site is actually attainable when we're discussing it. We've also developed costs for this, and when we broke down those costs, we found that for NC two A, the tax impact to the citizens of Marlboro for the medium-priced home would be an average of $219 a year over the course of 30 years. The process is not complete. As we said, we have evaluated but not made final decisions. There is discussion that is still going on amongst the School Building Committee before they're going to make their final decision to recommend a solution. We're going to report on a lot of this same information, as well as the costs, to the Urban Affairs Committee of City Council on next Tuesday. And the school committee, or the School Building Committee, is going to ultimately vote on which scheme they think should move forward when we get together with them at a publicly noticed meeting on October 2nd. Once they make that decision, we'll go to both the City Council and the school committee for an endorsement of the selected scheme before submitting that information to the MSBA, receiving their comments, and then moving forward into the final phase of the funding the project portion, where we design the building that will move forward for the city of Marlboro, establish a budget for that building, and ultimately bring it back to the City Council for them to determine if they want that to move forward, which would trigger the remaining design and the construction of the building. There is a project website that's been put together that features a lot of the information that the School Building Committee has reviewed and discussed over the course of the process that we've been working on, this project. Tonight's presentation will be added to that website, so if you would like to look at it in more detail, you'll have that opportunity. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor and the school committee for any public comment or questions.
Thank you, Chris. So now we'll open this up to questions. So if you have questions, please come to the microphone. We would like to limit this to two minutes per question, just for time purposes, and also if we can please stay on task regarding the project as a whole. So if there's any questions now, please come up to the podium. If you are watching at home, feel free to email any questions to my office, and we can get those directed with answers to you if you cannot be here tonight. Having said that, if there are any questions, so please state your name, and then we will happy to answer the question.
Good evening, everyone. I'll try to speak up, since I'm a little bit hot of hearing and having trouble with the hearing here. I'm Mark Oram. I'm a city councilor in Marlboro at large, as well as I live at 108 Upland Road. And more interestingly, I'm going to have a grandson that will probably end up at Richer School because they live on Mount Pleasant Street. So, brand-new, only a day old, but I'm just as concerned as every parent here. And one question I have, if anyone saw the news at the beginning of school in Ashland, they had a B issue. Well, that's a new school that got built, and they used a geothermal well over there for energy needs. Is energy, are energy needs being determined now, or will they be determined at a different point? Yeah, I was involved with that one, so I'm just curious. Energy needs, geothermal well? Energy needs and geothermal well? Just curious if that's being considered at this point or it's later.
Once again, sorry, I'll try to speak a little bit closer. We have started to analyze the different options using a lifecycle cost analysis process. At the moment, we are going forward with a mixed-fuel option, but opting in to meet the stretch energy code. So at this moment, geothermal is not being considered as part of this cost estimate in this project. But it is going to be something that we can discuss further as time goes on.
There's one other question. I don't want to take up all the time here. The cost for NC six, whatever it was called, the one down at Ames. I know we don't know the value right now of the land. It seems to me that, you know, the way the committee rounded it down seems very appropriate, you know, having NC two A and NC six. The question on NC six is any, and I know it's hard to estimate the cost of land because that's being sold, but has there been any estimates on the cost of that land? And then could that be incorporated into a formula so we would know if it's more than $219 per median household for 30 years, or is it less? I'm just curious if that has been considered with the assessment of that land.
Thank you, and that's an excellent question. As part of the process for establishing costs for all of the projects, we did procure a licensed appraiser to come in and evaluate both of the privately-owned properties that we were looking at. As part of the costs that we analyzed, we used those appraisal values in order to do the analysis, and we did find that at the appraisal value, it was less costly than what we based the tax impact on.
Less costly for the?
Less costly for Forest. Less costly for Forest and Ames versus what is called NC two A. Those costs will be discussed as part of the City Council Urban Affairs Committee's deliberations on Tuesday of next week.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
My name is Dana McPhee. I have a child at Richer, and I live in the neighborhood. I have a few questions, but I don't have to ask them all. My first is, there was no talk of what would happen for play if we use the Richer Field, so I'm curious what the plan would be for that. I also, living in that neighborhood, know that that is a flood zone, and I'm kind of curious about how that's going to be handled. Should I just, I'll start with that.
Okay.
So there are two questions there. The first one was...
Play.
Play. Thank you.
Yep.
And that's a great concern. We've been hearing that from Marlboro Public Schools. What does play look like during construction? And so we've been active about that. We've gone to construction sites to understand kind of what are the scenarios. We would endeavor to have a temporary plan, you know, before construction starts on the new fields, to make the parking, the play, the best we can with the land we have available, and that's also financially responsible. And so we're still working on those. We're trying to find kind of where this project's going to land, and we can start to develop those. But that's a real concern, and we're absolutely ready to jump on that when it's time. The second question was...
It's a flood zone area, correct.
And so with that, we can do our best to slow down and retain the water on the Richer property itself. That's another kind of design element that we'll have to involve our civil engineers with. And again, until we have, like, where is this going to be, we can't advance what are the possible solutions.
Just to add to that, as part of the estimating process, that concern was raised by DPW, and we are looking at a slightly higher, obviously, we're 15% into the building, so there's a lot of work to be done to figure out where we are. But we did estimate higher as it related to storm drainage when we were putting together our estimates, with the understanding that water management, stormwater management at the Richer site is something that is a concern. So we want to make sure that we've planned for an ample budget that can address that
And my one other question is, you started by talking about libraries, but I saw no library on either of those schematics, and so I'm curious if there will finally be a library at Richer.
I think if, I'm happy to let you answer that question if that would be most appropriate, Mr. Superintendent.
Sure. So in our initial education plan, there was a design where we actually had kind of a series of smaller media centers. We've since made some revisions to that to restore a large media center in the building, you know, with a library, and that would operate in that capacity, so.
So we've tested this out. The little pink squares are actually the media centers, which are those kind of dispersed media centers throughout this diagram that you can see here. We are confident that we can create one of those centralized media centers in either one of these final two options. So we're going to be continuing that study as we move on with our preferred solution.
Are there any other questions? Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Greta Lofgren. I'm running for city council for Ward Seven. My question is, how much, well, two questions. How much of this design is repeated from an existing tested design? As well as what are the benefits and downsides of the L shape versus the rectangle?
Thanks for your question. So the question was about, is this a tested design? The site here is very constrained and small, and so there are aspects of this building that we have in our portfolio. For example, we have a building in Shrewsbury where we do put the cafeteria below the gym, and so that is a tested thing that we can do with acoustics. We've been down that road, and that is familiar. As far as placement of classrooms around the exterior, whether it's a single, a double loaded corridor or a format like this in a square, there are a lot of similarities there. Have we done a prototype building of this before? The answer is no. But we're confident that this is a good solution for Marlboro. And, you know, having a model school solution just wouldn't fit with the site that we have, just the available land. And it's a very large school for, at the elementary level. Your second question... Advantages, disadvantages. The L shape is a little more conventional, the access to daylight because the perimeter is a little more expansive. Like I said, it's more conventional, it's easier to relate to. The separation between public and private spaces is something that we fundamentally do in a lot of our schools, so that is a little departure from, I guess, the scheme you see on the screen. It's a little different in that respect. But also, with that additional perimeter, there's some costs that follow that. And so we did look at, looking at an example of the Goodnow School and trying to modify that and try to improve that plan, but it didn't really get traction amongst the different committees. And so we thought that a customized solution for Richer made the most sense. And these are still early designs. They have the potential to kind of evolve through the next couple of phases, and so what you see isn't locked in stone, set in stone.
If I could add to that from a process standpoint, I think it's the, we rushed through, because we only had so much time tonight, the process that we've gone through to get to this point. But as part of that process, members of the School Building Committee visited multiple schools, both Lammero Pagano Designs, as well as designs from other architects, to understand what works and what doesn't work in a school. We did an extensive visioning process to understand what was important for a school and what functions in a school as part of the process to get us to this point. When we move into the next phase, one of the things that we do is we look at the school on a much smaller scale. We understand the relationships within the design parameters that we've set so that we, the design team's going to develop much more detailed plans, because those detailed plans are necessary to understand both that this works with the way that teachers work, and part of that is meeting with teachers to understand how they work, and also so that we can understand effectively what the cost of the building and the related building costs should be when we bring this back to the voters through the City Council.
Please state your name.
Hello, my name is Jacob Ratliff. I also live in the neighborhood, have a child at Richer. My question is, as this process goes forward, I know you mentioned that you've been using a very student-centric design, but recognizing that there are a lot more users of this school than just the students, how are people going to be involved to give feedback in terms of administration, staff, to make sure that things are not just appropriate for the students and for the education, but also for the teachers, parents, and everyone else involved, so that it's a full stack of user experience design rather than just student-centric?
That's a great question. Thank you. We've already had several meetings, excuse me, several meetings with the staff, and we plan to have a whole regimen of additional meetings with every single person on Ms. Richer's, Lisa's, staff. So with the programming, we like to approach this to make sure that the end results are exactly what you're looking for in terms of every single person who's going to be operating in this school. So that means every single staff person gets a voice. We meet department by department by department, all the way from kitchen to custodial, to ensure that we've made sure that everybody who's an end user in the building is heard. We also have plans to have additional meetings like this so we can hear more student and family and neighbor voices. family and neighbor voices, and this is just the first one of those meetings. So as part of our programming and outreach program, we plan to have a lot more of these opportunities to be able to make sure that all voices are heard in the design of the Richer building.
Any other questions? If you want, if you would like, you can stand behind, so we can just get a flow going. Thank you.
I'm Hannah Fulham. I have two children at Richer. I'm very much for doing something to fix the Richer problem, even though it's a fabulous community within the school. I know we need it. We've talked about tax implications of building the new building, but then we have to staff the new building. And are we confident that we have the revenue to fund what is needed to keep up this building, to staff this building, and to actually create the school community that we really want within it?
Thank you, please.
That's actually a very timely question. So just recently, we have been working on a projected budget, believe it or not, but for 2029, 2030, when the building would open. We started by looking at what does it take to support 950 students in terms of administration, social-emotional supports, classroom teachers, supplies, materials, and we actually will have a draft budget to the owner's project manager next week that we'll be submitting to MSBA. So the good news on the operational side of the finances is that we'll obviously be removing children from the other buildings, so we'll be able to shuffle some of the staff around. But the other side of the operational costs is we won't be able to do that with every position necessarily, right? So there will be some additional operating costs, which is the process we're running through right now.
Thank you.
Hi, my name, my name's Andrew Pye. Just to follow up on that, we've been eliminating positions at the schools such as librarians, music teachers for a couple of years now. So is that part of your budget concerns, is getting those staff back into all the schools as we do the redistricting?
So I'm looking at this from two different perspectives, right? So we have, we have a budget of currently just under $83 million as far as what the operating cost for the school system. We fund and support what we prioritize. So if we want to look at a way to bring back librarians, I just use that as an example because that was something you mentioned, then we would look at a way to do that, first by repurposing existing dollars. In some cases, we may not be able to do that. In some cases, it might be additional financial requests to the city. But as it relates to how we would staff this, I think the term that I keep coming back to is right sizing. So when we're moving from a currently 500 students to 950 students in that building, again, there's about a 450 student swing coming from other schools, and I'm not saying it's going to be exactly that, but just estimating. That's a lot of children, right? And so those children will come with some additional staff resources. I think what we'll need to do through the process of planning the FY, actually, it'll be FY 30, FY 31, as far as when we would open the building, we'll be looking at what that kind of right sizing the staff is going to mean as far as implications on the other building as it relates to Richer schools. So I don't think it's going to be all new money, and I don't think that we'll need to necessarily restore, you know, past positions. I think it's going to depend upon what's in our education plan and what we prioritize.
One last question. If we did Forest and Ames, what would happen with the existing site at Foley?
That's to be determined, yeah.
Would it, would it stay public, or would we sell it to developers? Just don't know?
Yeah, it's too soon to say, yeah.
Hi, my name is Laura. I'm a parent at Richer. So I just have a question about safety. If there is, if you go proceed with the construction next to the school, are we having like those measures of safety, how it's going to affect our students, our staff, of how close the proximity is, because we did, they did mention it's 65 feet? So I'm just worried about that.
So Marlboro is our 18th core grant program that Vertex has done, and safety is paramount to every project that we do. Safety involves multi-tiers. There's safety of the student in the school, there's safety of the student from the construction, there's safety of the worker while he's building it. And all of those are always at the forefront of everything that we do. Every meeting starts with safety. Over the course of the design, we have extensive discussions with the first responders, with the school staff and their safety plan that they use throughout the schools. During the course of construction, one of the things we push for on every project that always is very popular is to make sure that we do criminal background checks on everyone who's going to work on the site. And also, as part of that, we write into the contract that the owner, in this case, the city of Marlboro, has the ability to say yea or nay when they see those records checked. And if we have an issue with someone on the course of construction, we also write in that we can say that person has to leave. So we make sure that we're always controlling and understanding who's on site. We make sure that everyone who's working on site is identified and badged. We also come up with strict rules. We are proposing to move forward with a construction manager at risk, and that means that we'll have more service offered from the contractor, and the contractor's providing service to the owner. It really allows you to have greater control over what's happening on site and to have more flexibility to ensure that when you set rules about how construction's going to work next to children, that those rules are followed and that there's follow-through on that. It's something we take extremely serious, and we have a great track record of being successful in that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My question would be, the 71%, is that a guarantee? I know you said they select, you know, the 71% reimbursement, so it's?
So you're speaking to the MSBA's reimbursement rate that they give you. So the MSBA reimbursement rate, what they do is, it's a multi-tiered program. What they do is they set certain construction caps within what the cost of your building is. Those caps are always lower than the final cost, and within those caps, they give you a certain percentage of reimbursement. They reevaluate that annually, usually around December, January, and so they will reevaluate that number as part of their annual reevaluation before we actually agree on a project budget. Now, when the city of Marlboro chooses the path forward at the end of schematic design and takes that to the MSBA, the MSBA will accept or deny, they very rarely deny, and offer the deal. That's the final deal that they'll offer you in terms of what their grant is, and it'll be based on what that rate is at the time, as well as certain escalators. There are opportunities through things like how efficiently Marlboro maintains their schools. If we move forward with the green, with the Optin Energy Code, as was described in the earlier comment about the systems, there's actually, you can gain an additional 4%. That's a significant amount of money when you're talking about a project of this scale. And at that time, the city of Marlboro enters into what's called a project scope and budget agreement. At that time, that rate is locked, and so at that time, you also have the exact maximum total grant. Now, it's important to describe it as a maximum total grant, because the grant is reimbursed at those percentages, which are set at that time, over the life of the job, as long as they fit within the confines of the program. So as you move forward, if the project comes in under budget, then you don't get the maximum grant because it's a percentage of what you spend. We've had a good track record in recent results where multiple projects that we've recently done have come millions of dollars under budget, which is great for the cities and towns that we're working in, because they're not spending as much on their construction. But it does have the ramification that whatever number I quote you and quote for the city council, and ultimately you get from the MSBA, you're probably going to be lower than that maximum number because you're not going to spend all the money.
I just got one more question. So if we go with the new site, what's going to be done with the old school? And I guess if we're going to build a new fire station, is there a guarantee that there won't be a tax increase in the next few years, or will there be a tax increase?
Both projects will impact the tax. Both projects will impact the taxes because it affects our debt service and what we're bonding out. Correct.
Once again, is the 71% isn't guaranteed, correct?
Just say yes or no.
No, it's not guaranteed until you get to, or probably James.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions going once? Any other questions going twice? Any other questions, final offer? Seeing none. On a personal note, I do want to thank everyone who showed up for today and to express their questions and their concerns. Obviously, this is very important for the city of Marlboro, but all of you who have children, and we do not take this lightly. We've had numerous meetings every week. So just so a recap on who's on the building committee, so we have the DPW Commissioner, as well as the Capital Improvement Manager for the city of Marlboro, two principals, resident who is in the building industry, a city councillor, a school committee member, superintendent, myself. So there's a lot of people that are into play with this project, and again, we meet every week. But it's also very important to hear your feedback. So if you re-watch this or you're watching at home, please provide more insight, more questions, concerns. Obviously, we deal with this every week, but there's, it could be something that could click and then open up new doors or new avenues. So I encourage everyone to be vocal and be diligent, so you're involved with this process just as much as we are. So having said that, there's no further questions.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is on the table and seconded. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding adjournment? Seeing none, all in favor? We are adjourned at 8:12. And again, thank you all for being here, and have a great night.